Poststorm issues fairly close, so we'll continue to do that. But it looks like this one's gonna be a doozy, so we're ready. That's all I got.
All right, thank you. Artie? All right, sounds good. Misty?
Good morning.
Morning.
I don't have too much. I'll repeat what Bob said. There is a Towns and Township Meeting, March 2nd, 2023. Our waiting past meeting starts at 1:00 P.M. The annual Towns and Township Meeting starts at 10:00 A.M. out at the BCOAC. Also, I attended the conference in Huron last week. Learned a little bit. A lot of it seemed redundant this year. Next year, the conference is in Spearfish at the Holiday Inn. Not quite sure of the dates yet. I haven't heard that information. Otherwise, I don't have anything else. Do you guys have any questions for myself?
All right, thank you. Dustin?
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
I'll start with attendance like I usually do. Since January 17th, the last meeting that I attended, archery range, we had 300, and then the gun range, we had 450. Business has been very good, picking up. We've done 70 events since the 17th. Just a little update, wanted to give you guys. We did receive a new scrubber. Our hilliard rep came across a pretty sweet deal. The Children's Museum ordered a scrubber. They didn't like it, so they actually honored the price that they quoted us last year, even though they went up about 8% in price. So we jumped on that. So we got it for what they quoted us last year, tried to save a little money. We also purchased a new server for the facility, and Sean got that installed last week. That came in under budget as well. Had a few projects I want to do just around the building, and I was gonna kind of get the consensus of the board, if I can just get the okay to get those done. With these smaller projects we have around the building, it's tough to find people to do them because they're so busy. These aren't crazy. It's just painting and maybe a little carpet and stuff like that. If you guys are okay with that. But if you want action items, I can bring that to the board as well. You okay with that? Just kind of upkeep of the building, minor stuff? Our berm is scheduled to get cleaned in May, and I've already got that approved through the state for our grant money. So that's moving forward. And I got some more quotes for, well, not quotes, but I got a filter quote that I need to submit to them, so they pay for that as well. We're also looking at doing a few more things this summer, since we're slower. We're looking at doing possibly a garage sale in the archery range. We'd rent booths to people. They can come out, and it'd be open to the public for free, and people could attend a garage sale. I don't know how well that'll go. We have a couple surveys out right now, and we've been getting some positive feedback. So that's something new for the facility. Other than that, I was looking at consensus as well to apply for the grant for 2024 through GFMP, asking for $15,000 this year. It's a 75-25. This is nothing new. It's just upkeep to the building. So if we don't get it, we have to pay for it anyways. And I can answer any questions on that, if you guys have any.
Yeah, we have it on the agenda for just a consensus. So I guess I'd look for consensus for everything. Any have any questions or concerns about that? All right, there you go.
It's due March 1st, and then they decide in June. So we already have to have the budget submitted anyways. But just to fill you guys in on that. That's all I had, unless you guys have anything for me.
All right.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. On the agenda is also Registered Deeds Annual Report. Bev, would you like to come on up?
Good morning.
Morning.
Annual report, I will start first with it, and usually it's up on the screen. There's some, but you all have gotten this in your packet, too, the what I'm, the spreadsheets that I'm gonna be following here. That's what I wondered if it was a little high for me. Is that okay? Okay, thank you. You would have gotten the spreadsheets in your packet to follow along with, but I will try to explain what I can here. On the first page, shows a breakdown and a comparison between '21 and '22. The first line is transfer fees, and the transfer fee or exempt code are required on any deeds that come into our office. And that's based on a dollar per thousand of the purchase price of the real estate. In '22, it was $307,850.50. We had an increase in transfer fees of $33,840.00. The second line is general fees. That includes the $30 per document of the recording fees, UCC financing statements, and location notices. That was $147,113. We showed a decrease of $54,472 on that. Third line are marriage licenses, and we issued 187 marriage licenses at $40 each. And the total is $8,920. We increased that by $1,440. The fourth line are certified copies, which are birth, death, and marriage certified certificates that we issue, and the fee for each is $15. And we issued $2,740 for a total of $41,100. And we increased $3,165. Copies and discs, that includes the physical transfers, the PTs of any deed that is recorded in our office. We have to print a PT for that. And Farm Service Agency in Brookings and Farm Credit Service in Watertown get copies of those, and also any copies that the title company purchases. One of the title companies purchases copies daily of any documents that come in, because by state law, they have to have those. And they pay 15 cents per page on that. And we got $4,281 from the copies and discs. We decreased by $1,630. And overall totals, we decreased in '22 of $17,657. On that first sheet, down towards the bottom, I've included everything that I, how I broke it down. Even, well, like the county share. The county gets $5 for birth and death certificates, and the whole $15 for marriage certificates. Then the state gets $10 for each birth and death certificate. It's nothing on the marriages. Marriage license, the domestic abuse, gets $30 from every license that we issue. And then the county's share is $10. At the very bottom, I have what actually stays in the county. So in '22, $470,498.50 actually stayed in the county. And in '21, it was $487,550.00. It also shows on that breakdown the technology fund or fee. The tech fee for the, that went to the state this year was $9,046. And what stayed in the county here is $13,569. Now, that is $5 from every document that we record, for real estate documents, goes to the Registered Deeds for technology in our office or anything to do with technology for our office. What we send to the state gets divided in August between every county, and then we, each county gets the same amount. That is written in law to help the counties that need, that are smaller population and need to keep up with technology for today's world, and they needed, need some help. So the law was passed that that is how we divide that up. That is basically it. On the other pages, I have the entire, that's the whole spreadsheet that I keep every month. And those total, the total is what we just went over on the first page. And then the last page, just because I'm, I like numbers and I like to keep track of what's going on, I have it broken down, how many, how many documents? Mortgages, deeds, miscellaneous? How many documents were brought in each month? And the pages on each, of each month, how many? Also, how many documents we recorded that we could take tech fund fee out? Because obviously, the ones, the documents that are no charge, like South Dakota housing is no charge, and any state tax liens are no charge. So I keep track of that, and how much our tech fee that we send to the county, and how much to the state. And then I compared it, too, with the '21. Also, I keep track of the pages because we charge the title company per page. So I need to do that, too. But any questions?
Questions for Bev?
I have one question. Since you don't get here a lot, Bev, this question's been asked me by several constituents over the last two years. I keep forgetting to ask you about it. But we see these advertisements on TV all the time for title theft on a house, and all of a sudden, it's not your house. And I can't answer to them whether that can happen under our Registered Deeds Office or not. So there is a question. Can it happen? Has it happened?
It has not happened. And I, we take every precaution so it doesn't happen. I can't say never, but the possibilities are extremely, extremely rare that it ever would. And it's kind of funny that you bring that up, because I wanted to bring up. I had gotten an email from, actually, it was from the Angleton County Registered Deeds. And he sent it to every Registered Deeds in the state, inquiring if we have had constituents come in that they have gotten letters saying that, it's called County Deed Records, and telling people that the warranty on their home has expired. And so they need to send so much money to these people so that their warranty deed continues. It's a scam. Don't fall for it. And I'm going to put that on social media. And I have had a warning on our website, but I'm gonna update that, too, on our page, because we've had people come in, too, like you said, Mike. You've been questioned about it. But we keep every precaution. We keep, documents are only, you know, we started digital in 2004. And so those documents are only on the computer, which Sean does a great job of keeping our county safe from anything like that. There are programs that the Registered Deeds Office can get and purchase, and that it would put the documents on the internet. And then they would, people could look at those and purchase them over the internet. I don't feel that that's safe. I don't want to do that for our people in Brookings County, because anything can get hacked into. We found that with Brown County last year. Their entire system went down because, and the Registered Deeds Office actually lost, I think it was four months of daily work, that they had to go back and thank goodness for written records, because, and title companies that have our records, because they had to get them back. So I'm not ever going to put that, the records, on the internet for that reason. And anyone that comes into our office and goes in the back room has to sign in if we don't, if they aren't title company, and we know them every day, you know? But we take every precaution to keep those records safe.
Thanks for the response. I think it helps the public understand that we are taking those precautions and those things that, like you said, scams. The title lock is probably not in some parts of the country, but around here, I don't know that it's necessary. So it's a public service to put that information out.
Yes.
Pretty secure, pretty, we watch it carefully.
Yes, and I do invite anybody that has any question to either come in the office or call. And we'd be certainly happy to explain things and show them the back room and show them exactly what we do and how we try to keep it safe for them.
Any other questions for Bev? Thank you. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right, we got a few minutes before nine o'clock, so we'll see if we can knock out a couple regular business items. A, Action to Approve Resolution 23-09, a resolution correcting Resolution 23-06, a supplemental budget resolution. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion, or Stacy, you have some comments on this?
So when we did the supplemental budget resolution at the last meeting, this item, the 295, or the Rural Access Infrastructure Fund, we had a supplement in there. As we started, as Jen in the Finance Office started processing that resolution, we realized that that budget authority had already been given as part of the annual budget, so we do not need this. So this is just a correction to that.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Johnson.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action to Approve Resolution 23-10, a plat of Chris Diedrich addition in the county of Brookings, South Dakota, located in the northeast quarter of Section 31, Township 109 North, Range 48 West, and the 5th Primaridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion, comments?
This was heard at our meeting and approved and sent to this board with the recommendation unanimously.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter C, in Action to Approve Resolution 23-11, a plat of Lot 1 of Wells addition in the southeast Range 49 West of the 5th Primaridian in Brookings County, South Dakota. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, comments?
Same thing, heard it in a February Planning and Zoning Meeting, passed unanimously, sent to this board with the recommendation you approve it.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter D, in Action to Approve Resolution 23-12, a plat of Lot 1 of Allison's addition in the southwest quarter of Section 8, Township 109 North, Range 49 West of the 5th Primaridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion, comments?
Once again, heard in February Planning and Zoning Meeting, recommended unanimously and sent to this board with the recommendation you approve it.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter E, in Action to Approve Resolution 23-13, a plat of Block 1 Meyer addition in the north half of the northeast quarter of Section 11, Township 111 North, Range 48 West in the 5th Primaridian in Brookings County, South Dakota. Is there a motion to approve?
Go move.
Second.
Discussion, comments?
Heard in February Planning and Zoning Meeting, passed unanimously and sent to this board with the recommendation you approve it.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Johnson.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter F, in Action to Approve Agreement 23-09, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of the county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy and Madera Township. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? It's like a standard one for us, so please call the, oh, actually, excuse me. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close the same sign. Motion carries. All right, it's nine o'clock, so we'll move on to a scheduled agenda item. Today, we have our annual update from our First District Association of Local Governments, and we have Todd Kays here today. So thank you, Todd, for coming.
Good morning.
Morning.
Well, we were supposed to get together in December of last year, and that was the information that was in your packet today. And there was a few minor adjustments that I've handed out, and we'll go over with you this morning. But normally, I like to get out at least once a year to meet with our counties, just to talk a little bit about the district, what we've been up to, what's been going on in your county, and also just to, for the public's information, to understand who we are and what it is that we do. A lot of my comments are gonna be talking to Sean here, because he's new. Everybody else has heard this shtick before. But we didn't get together in 2022. We got together in the end of 2021 at a meeting here in Brookings to talk about activities. But just to start out, the First District is one of six regional planning and development districts located in South Dakota. We have sister agencies in Rapid City, Aberdeen, Pierre, Angleton, and Sioux Falls. We're not government, next slide, please. Can I do that? Okay, thank you. We're not government, but we're creatures of government. We were created in 1971 through executive order by then-Governor Frank Farrar. We cover 11 counties and 76 municipalities in northeastern South Dakota. And our mission, then, is still pretty much the same as it is today. We're there to provide technical support services to enhance community and economic development for those member entities within the district. Next slide, please. The district itself is governed by a governing body. That governing body is a 35-member board, of which each county has three representatives. Plus, we have the Chairman of the Flandre-Santi Sioux and the Sistin-Wapen-Oyate Tribes as members of the board. Currently, Mike Bartley is the County Commissioner Rep. Mike also sits on our Executive Board. And Kelly is the at-large rep. He was our, he was the at-large rep before, when he, before he became elected onto this esteemed panel and has been retained. Currently, we have a vacancy on the municipal side. The Mayor, Fred Weeks of Aurora, was a board member for many, many years, and we are in the process of getting a municipal representative, representative appointed to our board. The county selects its county rep, and the county selects its at-large rep. The municipalities pick their own representative on our board. As far as how we are funded, we have three streams of income that come into our organization. Each county and each municipality with a population of more than 100 pays dues into our organization. That represents about 20% of our operating revenues. We use those dollars to leverage other state and federal grants, and we also do some contract work for state and federal entities, which is about another 20-odd percent. Line share of what we do, as far as fee-for-service work, is basically, we're doing those technical services to our, for our members, but we're doing them at rates less than you would find in the private sector, and that's just due to the power of the collective. Very blessed to have a very seasoned staff. We currently have 12 employees with about 180 years' worth of experience in our office. You can see on there that some of us are getting a little long in the tooth. I'll be 30 years here in May with the district. Did not see that happening in 1993. But, and Greg Mog, who's been with us for almost 31 years, will be retiring here in June. But we have several staff members that work in planning and zoning, Luke Muller, myself, Peyton Sarda. We have a couple individuals that work just in grant writing and project administration. We have three or four individuals that work in geographic information systems for both local, state, and regional data sets. And then we also have a sister organization, our development company, the First District Development Company. Currently, three employees there that work, they work with the private side of the district. They provide revolving loan funds, small business administration loans to businesses that are creating new jobs and expanding. As far as things that we do, we're very known for is writing a lot of grant applications, and we'll talk about that here just a little bit in Brookings County. Once those funds are obtained by our members, there's no free money. There's always strings attached to it and requirements that have to be monitored, and we assist in that project administration. And then planning and zoning and research and studies and book reports and what have you, we've done them all, right? And then, in addition to our GIS and revolving loan funds, we also assist our municipalities and some of the other individuals in tax increment financing and out there schlepping just the programs that are available to our membership. So there's so many things that we do, I think, that provide a direct and indirect benefit. But the easiest way to measure, I think, your return on investment is just on the grants and loans that have come into the district and in your own entity over the course of the last year. The handout here is a little bit different than what we have up on the screen. There was a few other grants that were added right before the end of the year. But bottom line, last year was a really odd year. I've been in the game for 30 years. We had more grant dollars and loan dollars flowing into the First District than we had combined in the last 15 years, for example, since I became the Director. Over $408 million, almost $409 million in grants and loans came in primarily through the ARPA monies that came from the feds. We did over $147 million in grants alone throughout our 11-county area. That's a, that's a $490 turnaround on investment. And what that is, is that just shows that we have a lot of communities and counties here in our part of the world that are reinvesting in themselves, taking advantage of opportunities to enhance infrastructure and community development activities. Since I became the Director 15 years ago, that average is about 66 bucks for every dollar's worth of dues, and we've been able to help $241 million in grants just into our 11-county area. So we did $147 million last year. We only did about less than 100 in the 15 years before that. Brookings County specifically was a very good year for them. Next slide, please. There, it's a little bit different, but it's about $481. $54 million in grants that came into Grant County and its municipalities, which is about a $70 turnaround on investment over the last 15 years. I'm gonna just go to the next, the one that's highlighted. Activities, next one. That's over our last 15 years. There's a, there's a handout there that just shows with highlights what, of different types of funding that happened. You know, Aurora, the city of Brookings, White, Volga, Brookings Dual River Water, all recipients of large dollars in grants and loans for their water and sewer enhancement projects. Brookings County, we worked with them in the town of Volga on getting a grant to improve that county road that's on, is it Samara? I believe. We've also submitted a grant application on behalf of Brookings County to update the pre-disaster mitigation plan. We're hoping to hear on that later this summer, and then that would be a project that we would work on. Every five years, you're required by the feds to update your pre-disaster mitigation plans, which then allows your municipalities and the county to apply for certain FEMA funds. I think the one big project, I think, that stands out for one of our members in our staff is the facilitation of the Joint Jurisdiction Ordinance between the city of Brookings and Brookings County. I think Jerry Garcia probably said it best. It was a long, strange trip. But it's come to its completion and conclusion. And I know Luke was, Luke was happy that that five-year deal is put to bed for a while, anyway. But that was a good project for both the city and the county and our office, and we appreciate our involvement with that. And then, you know, Luke Muller's here every month with the, either on the phone or in person at your Brookings County Planning and Zoning Board meetings. But this is just kind of a general list of the things that have happened in the last year. There was another handout in there that goes back since 2008, just a listing of different types of projects we've been involved with, with the district. a listing of different types of projects we've been involved with, with the district. In your handout, I've also, just more of a promotional piece. It kind of lays out the different areas of work activities that we, that we are involved with. We'll try anything once, and if we're good at it, we'll keep doing it. If we're not very good at it, we'll find somebody else to do that for you and do it in a cost-efficient and effective manner. We've appreciated our working relationship with Brookings County and the communities in Brookings County over the last 52 years, over my 30 years of work experience, and we just look forward to another, you know, beneficial, fruitful year for both organizations and always here to do whatever we can for you, and all you have to do is ask, and we'll be here. So, any questions or comments?
The only comment I've got is, you may be long in the tooth, but you've served the First District well, and we appreciate it.
Well, we thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. We appreciate your report.
Stay warm, stay safe.
Safe, right.
I noticed I was supposed to be here two months ago, and it blizzarded at that.
All right. We'll move on. Items. Forward here. All right. Next up is letter G, an action to approve agreement 23-10, State of South Dakota consultant contract for provision of community health services. Is there a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Second. Discussion, comments?
As part of my staff report, you can see, this is just an annual agreement that we do every year with community health. There was just a slight increase, $67 over 2022.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter H, an action to approve abatement 23-01, an abatement application made by Madison Aircraft LLC for parcel number 40991-40005-000-20 in the amount of $1,040.24. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion, comments? Anything on this?
Both of these abatements were, are recommended for approval by both the finance office and equalization.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Action to approve abatement 23-07, an abatement application made by Sunny Ridge Inc. for parcel number 40338-01300-011-00 in the amount of $102.54. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approve.
Second.
Any discussion, comments? Hearing none, please call the roll. Or, excuse me. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Letter J, action to automatically supplement for unanticipated expenses incurred and reimbursement made to Brookings County for opioid settlement payment for the state's attorney. General Ledger line 101-4-151-4281 in the amount of $2,965.65. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Discussion.
Yeah, this will be given to the Brookings County Drug Court pursuant to the presentation by Judge Howard and Joan Nettig from last two weeks ago, so that's where this money will go.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Letter K, action to appoint Kelly Vanderwall to the at-large position on the First District Association of Local Governments Board. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Letter L, action to approve the transfer of Dell Power Edge Server from the BCOAC to the IT department. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approve.
Second.
Second. Okay, discussion, comments? John, anything?
This is just something that could possibly be repurposed, so we're just transferring it from BCOAC to the IT department.
All right. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Close, same sign. Motion carries. Letter M, discussion and possible action on intersection of 2004th Street and 459th Avenue. Is there a motion to approve for discussion?
Motion to approve discussion.
I think it would be appropriate to have discussion first before any action is taken on that.
All right. Discussion again, or we'll start discussion then.
So I can start. We had a citizen that was concerned about this intersection. If you're not, if you're familiar with that area, this is west of Oakwood on County Road One from the outhouse corner north, and then when you get to that four-way stop west of Lake Oakwood area. And the citizen that lives in that area travels through that intersection every day, and they have seen kind of an increase in people running that four-way stop, had some concerns, especially with the amount of fog and, and weather that we've had during the season lately. I did visit with Sheriff Stanwyck about this, and he suggested that I add this on the agenda for discussion. I think what this person's looking for is that there's a possibility for any additional safety mitigation out at that four-way stop. So that's, that's where we're at. That's the discussion item.
Right. Sheriff, do you have any comments on this, or?
It's just that I did the research on the accidents, you know, through my software database, and we've had two accidents at intersection in the last three years. Tro Sergeant, he, we've not received any complaints at this intersection. So, I know there's a lot of traffic there, especially at harvest time, and also during the summer, of course, with travel to the lakes and so forth. But, you know, I have other four-way stop signs that probably, all mine probably have, you know, some need of maybe something different to them. And just talking briefly with Brian, the very least we could do right now is, we have these little twirly things that put up on the stop signs. That won't help us, though, with fog. And if fog is probably the biggest thing at stop signs is, is, you know, if someone's not familiar with that intersection, or even if someone's familiar in a, in a deep fog. But other than complaints and accidents, I don't, I haven't had that many.
Comments?
Couple of questions, Marty. Is there a sign that says "stop ahead" at that intersection?
Yeah, I believe there is, yes.
After I seen this come out on the agenda, I called three of the neighbors in that area, asked them several different questions, but all of them had kind of a consensus that it's, it's worse in the summer when there's light traffic. They do, however, feel that some of it is trucks are running the stoplight, or, excuse me, the stop sign. One of the suggestions was putting rumble strips in. Not sure what that'll cost the county to do that, but there's some of them by Elk, and I believe, on the curve over there. That, that was one thought. But the flashing lights, I think, is a great idea. I'm not sure, being new to this, if, if we have budget dollars available for that, or if that's something we do next year. But I'm open to hear what your thoughts are on this.
I think improvements that we can do there would help, the lit-up stop signs with the lights or rumble strips. I think we should have Brian's input on it. What, is predominantly the people running the stop sign going east and west, or is it north and south?
One of the three said they thought it was the east and west was the worst. The other two said it was both ways.
My suggestion is we ask Brian to give some cost estimates on options that we could do and whether or not. I don't know if we have any traffic counts out there, do we? On any of those intersections? Do we have the ability to do traffic counts, or is that pretty much just the state?
No, Brian's got equipment to do traffic counts.
And again, we'd have to do that almost for a year in order to get accurate with summer traffic and everything else. Anyway, I, I think, you know, I'll talk to Brian and see if we can come up with some cost estimates and feasibilities to, to address the intersection would be my suggestion.
I know that, that when we did the stop signs, that the solar stop signs for south, you know, South Main and stuff, it was around $1,500. That was a cost share with the city that they'd put up to and we put up to, but I think it was around that, $1,500, $1,600 per stop sign for the solar ones. And they are bright. I want my, you know, for, for safety, you know, even the ones at Bruce, I want... Because that intersection worries me a little bit more sometimes than, than the other one, but I think anytime that...
Maybe the discussion is whether we do these things for intersections that you've noticed are a problem, in addition to citizen complaints. Just do an overall study.
You know, we have, you know, we have some funds, you know, that for special commission project funds, and there's pretty substantial, I, I... Identify some intersections that are high-traffic out in the county on major county roads and check and see, get a cost estimate, and if we need to spend $10,000 on some intersections, you know, we've got some funds. So, maybe we should be a little proactive on this, and not just this intersection, but maybe other intersections throughout the county, if that's something we would want to do. Yeah, no, it's a good idea. Yep.
Um, a little history on that intersection. Years ago, going east and west, there was no stop sign there. Going east and west, the state, when they upgraded 81, they used it as a detour, and that's when the stop signs were installed. And after the project was done, it was recommended to leave the stop signs there. That's, that's, that's the reason the stop signs were there. But that was many years ago, and I guess public is used to, most of the public is used to stopping there now. So, just all eliminating those two stop signs, I think, would maybe cause us another problem. So, I think we have Brian look at it forward.
The three neighbors that I talked to there, none of them requested taking any stop signs down. They, they wanted to leave it as is. Yeah.
Well, why don't we, you know, just put this to another agenda item, visit with Brian, visit with sheriff, and get some identif, identify some intersections throughout. I mean, also that same highway that runs east, excuse me, runs west and then gets on Highway 81 there would be a nice flashing one there, too, to make sure people aren't sliding into oncoming traffic, you know, some tire traffic intersection. So, let's, let's put this on another agenda down the road here, whether it's next week, next meeting or a couple down there. Let's get some information on what the costs are and see if it's something we want to, want to do. Does that sound okay?
All right. So, we will move on to, letter N is 2022 year-end review.
All right, this is me. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
All right. So, as we just go through here, introduction page, listen for the commissioners from 2022 and their positions on the board last year. Then we get into the Brookings County departments and the different department heads, and we have the four elected department heads that you can see there, the appointed department heads, and then the, the two state offices that we also provide some staffing for. So those are state employee department heads there. The next page, the number of employees by department. This just goes through kind of at year-end. Last year, where were we at for full-time and part-time staff by department? And then the next page is that FTE or Full-Time Equivalent Report, kind of a four-year lookback and then the, the change. So, you'll see there, the greatest change, obviously, within the Sheriff's Department and the Detention Center, that due, of course, to our jail project. So we added, added staff there. The state's attorney, the plus one, that's when they combine the human services office in there. So that was just that position, position joining the state's attorney's office. BCOAC, they just lost some part-time staff, so that's what that is. Commission office, plus two over the, the four years, we've added veterans to us, and I believe that might have also been the second IT position here in the last four years, I believe. And then, that's really about it. Weed and Pest was down one. I think that was the, the, the weed, the enforcement officer position. And then Community Health, we lost a half to, or a, a part-time person there, so. The next page is the General Fund Expenses Departmental Overview. So this goes to all of our different departments that have budgets in that general fund, and you can see there just a bar graph showing year-end, what we spent on each of those departments. And if you have any questions, just yell and stop me. I can, I can hear you, and I can answer questions. The next page shows, again, by all of those different departments that were on the page prior, what their beginning budget was in 2022, and then the next couple lines, if they had contingency transfers, or if we did supplemental budgets. You can see that supplemental budget's pretty high. Some of that, especially like in the Commission Department, that was Commission Project Funds. That was a big dollar amount that went into there. And you see kind of that we had quite a few supplemental budgets. If you recall, that was the, the salary supplements that we did as part of that July 1 increase last year. Usually, you won't see that many budget supplements, but we did last year. So you take that beginning budget contingency and supplemental, uh, budget supplement, and that you get your total budget at the end of the year. And then in the far-right column is the unspent budget at year-end. And what that all does is go down to that, that last kind of orange, light orange row down at the very bottom, shows what our total revenue was, what our total expenses were, and then you can see that, that that amount rolled into fund balance. That's about $3.3 million rolled into fund balance at year-end last year. Keep in mind, a lot of that was Commission Project Funds that, that will be spoken for and got supplemented back into the budget for this year, too. So, any questions on that one? Moving on, so other county funds, where we've been kind of focusing, those first few slides around the general fund, this is all of the different, different funds. So you see, obviously, the Road and Bridge Fund is our, has our biggest expense, and then a lot of smaller funds kind of in between there. The Detention Center expansion, we were wrapping up that project last year. That, you know, we'll still have just some few minor expenses here in 2023, but moving forward, that fund will go away. But, yeah, that's just those, all those other funds outside of the general fund. And then the next page, similar to what I did for the general fund, by these funds, we did the same thing, beginning budget, supplement, ending budget, what rolled into or what was unspent, and then I did the total revenue, total expense, and what rolled into fund balance in each of those individual funds there. So similar to general fund a couple pages ago, this was by all of those individual ones. And then you can see the next couple pages here are, this next page, fund balance at year-end, and that just shows general fund, the Road and Bridge Fund, and then the 301 or the County Building Fund. Those are our three probably biggest funds, so I wanted to show where we were at and show that, what rolled into the, into fund balance in each of those funds over the past five years. The next page is non-mandated funding at budget time. The commission spends a lot of their time deciding on these non-mandated entities and what dollars get spent there. And you can see, as we go across there, these are all the non-mandated funding requests that were spent in 2022. And then we get into some revenue information here for both general fund and Road and Bridge Fund on this next one. This really just breaks down where our, where our revenue is coming from for these, for these two major funds. Obviously, the general fund, you can see the majority of our funds come from taxes. And then Road and Bridge, we have a lot of that just intergovernmental revenue. This next one's kind of hard to follow because of all the different colors, but these are all of those other funds, and they're kind of listed out by color kind of along the bottom there, and what, what makes up their revenue, so. And then the next page is the revenue recap. We have, we start each year with a revenue budget. Then it shows what actual revenue came in and what that difference was. So what we were anticipating for revenue, what we, versus what we were actually had. And then plus or minus, if we, if, if, if it's a plus, we got more revenue than anticipated. If it's a negative, we got less revenue than what we were anticipating. And that listed out by all of the different funds there. So these next three pages, I believe, just shows yearly comparisons over the last three years. This is what we, what we call the trial balance. It shows revenue expenditures, the fund balance and assets and liabilities, and how those fluctuate from year to year. So this is, the first page is the General Fund, starting, you know, the 2022 in that red, 2021 in the orange, and 2020, 2020 in the yellow. And I did that for the next three pages. You can look at that and compare General Fund, Road and Bridge Fund, and the County Building Fund. Some of the big things to note, I know, like especially in the County Building Fund, you could see some very high levels in 2020 and 2021. That's due to the jail project, so. And then as I wanted to hit on some of the highlights from the year, the first thing is Commission Project Funding. And then I listed out there what we've done, and I even actually added in 2023 since we had that information already. But 2022, what was approved, we're still paying some of that out. That money hasn't all been extended yet, but that shows what we've spent so far those with Commission Project Funds on. And then the next page is our Jail Expansion. That project is wrapping up. We're very, very close to, to the end of that now. But there are just a couple of pictures to show that we are, we are about, just about done with that project and it's, and it's looking really nice. The next page is the Interchange Project. That one too, that we have been working in conjunction with the city on over the past year. That, that is scheduled to wrap up, I believe, in July this year. And then the big event that affected a lot of things for us was that Major Rachel event. And you can see, these are some pictures that we took from, obviously, losing our highway, one of the, the buildings out at the Highway Department, kind of in that bigger picture. And then the upper right-hand picture is kind of the debris field that was left in Pioneer Park from our building getting blown over. And then last but not least, we had some interesting weather as we wrapped up our year last year with some, some blizzards and, and whatnot. And of course, we're continuing that. It seems appropriate to be talking about that now as we, over the next few days, it could sound like it could be interesting again. So that's my, my year-end review. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them for you.
All right, thank you, Stacy. Questions for Stacy? Comments? All right. Well, thank you, Stacy. That's a great presentation and very insightful. We forget all the time sometimes how much money we do spend. It's kind of crazy, but all, all for good, all for good. All right.
Yeah.
Well, let's go. Number 10 is the Commission Department Directors' Report. Stacy, you're still on page.
Okay, so part of my report there, you see the January VSO numbers. Courtney was very, very busy in January, 95 appointments, three outreach events, and eight DAV van rides. Just so you know too, we did have a couple of veterans use the data bus option. And data then just kind of in turn builds us for those rides. So that, we haven't used it very often, but it, we've needed it a couple of times and it has worked out. So that's moving forward. Part of my report, in my, in the packet, there was some information from, actually Carol Muller from Minnehaha County had shared that with me about Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant Program. It looks like, I haven't looked into it a whole lot, haven't had a chance. But it looks like Brookings County is eligible for about a little over $75,000 in, if we have a project that qualifies for this energy, energy block grant program. So if there's some interest in that, I mean, we can, I can definitely look into that some more and, and see if we have some projects, if we can come up with a project that might be eligible for that funding.
I think we ought to. I mean, obviously, we're looking at Courthouse and doing some efficiency and remodeling over there is one. And there's probably others too. So I would think Stacy, if you could identify those, we should apply.
Okay, I will, I'll look into this some more and, and see what I can come up with. Also in your packet was the meeting, the next two Valley Commissioners, Ten County Meeting is Wednesday, March 15. It's hosted by Hamlin County, but it'll be in Bryant, South Dakota. I do need the RSPT, so if you would let me know if you plan to attend, I will get that RSPT sent out.
I will be having surgery on the 13th, so will not be able to make it, so.
Okay.
I intend to make it. This is Mike.
What was that?
This is Mike. I intend to, to attend.
This is Kelly. I intend to make it as well.
Sean should be there too. Sean will be there too.
Larry will be there also.
Okay. Just writing this all down. And then we did get a request for the Public Relations Funds again from the Uncle Sam Jam. That came in after my report was done. We have done $1,500 for the Uncle Sam Jam over the past several years. And that is budgeted in the Public Relations Fund, if you are okay with that. Last year, as part of that funding, the county then was the sponsor for the Kids Craft Area. So if you, if you're okay with that, can you say so? And I will go ahead and get that sent off for that event.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yep.
All right, everybody's good.
Okay, perfect. And then just some upcoming dates that we have, this Thursday. I suppose barring any weather issues, the Community Public Open House for the 2023 Construction Project. I believe the high, our Highway Department is going to be a part of that discussion or that open house as well. And that's going to be there, right there in the chambers, starting at 5 o'clock on Thursday. There was the First Responder Wild Game Feed out at the BCOAC. I have sent information out on that. That's on Saturday, February 25th, starting at 5:00. I think several people had mentioned, Missy earlier had mentioned Township Meeting on March 2nd is coming up. We just discussed the Ten County Meeting. And then we are all registered for the FDA CC Spring Workshop in here, coming up a little bit further out in April. And that's all I have, unless you guys have any questions for me.
Any questions for Stacy? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
State's Attorney's Report?
Nothing to report.
All right. We'll move on to Commissioner Reports. Start with Kelly.
Thank you. On February 11, I attended the Legislative Cracker Barrel here in Brookings. Mr. Bartley did a great job. 13th, I attended the tour at the New United Way Building. Very informative. February 15, Railroad Authority Board, this is the first time in a while that board's met. We're going to have another meeting. I believe Stacy's going to get something scheduled here in March. February 16 and 17, I went to hearing to the South Dakota Weeden Pest Conference. Then, let's see, yesterday, Monday, the 20th, I went to the United Way Stronger Together deal out at SwifteL. It was a good, good conference. And then last night, I went to Watertown to the Pipeline Safety Meeting.
All right. Mr. Bartley?
Obviously, the Cracker Barrel Legislative Coffee on Saturday. Hall chairs into this room. It was so well attended and everybody was extremely courteous. The six legislators did an excellent job answering questions. Obviously, when you have an hour, you don't get a lot of questions in. But we did get the important ones in and people were very good about the responses from legislators. I also attended the United Way Food Pantry Tour on Monday. And it's a great facility. I hope it succeeds in the future and have enough room to continue. If not, we'll have to address that later. But they, they've done a great job with that office. And that completes my report.
All right, Mr. Jensen?
On the 8th, I had Extension Board meeting, a lot of talk on the upcoming year. Lot of numbers, more, there's been more volunteers coming forward. There was a few concerns on achievement days for the pork feed. We might need a few more volunteers to help serve the meal that evening. On the 15th, I had Railroad Authority Meeting with Commissioner VanderWaal. Basically, an organizational meeting. We're getting set up. We're going to have another meeting to get all our individuals in place. So that's all I have.
All right, Commissioner Hostler?
Yeah, so on the, on the 8th and also the 15th, I attended the Public Affairs Weekly Update for the Legislature Zoom Meetings. Other than that, my calendar was pretty, pretty empty. I do want to make note that on the 7th, I will be traveling unable to attend the Commission Meeting due to flights and flight arrangements.
All right, sounds good. Okay, I had a light schedule. Leadership Meeting, which is the board that oversees the Research Park. And we have quarterly meetings, so we had a good, long meeting there. And it was a very positive meeting. The Poet Building is, is almost complete. We're going to be looking at doing a ribbon cupping in the grand opening, but that's going to be probably later in the year. They're, they're waiting for the HVAC unit still to get here. But currently, they are heating using temporary units. That seems to be going well, so they can finish everything up. But yeah, I think we're looking that down the calendar, probably around that October number is what we're looking at, which we will invite, you know, the governor and all of the legislature that was heavily involved in that building. And obviously, commissioners will be invited too. So otherwise, I think that's all I have. We'll move on. Executive Session, accordance to South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-2, number 1 and 4. I need a motion to go into executive session, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. All right, we'll take a 10-minute break.